Jeremy, on the topic of learning new things, you mentioned today that your colleagues were peeved when you spent half of the time learning new things.
Uh huh.
How did you, how did you stand your ground?
I don't know. Just. Buddy minded, I don't know.
Was it because you're so productive that didn't matter?
No, no, I mean, it matters. I mean, most of that time, I was either the manager of a management consulting team, or I was CEO of a company or whatever. So like, I mean, my first two startups, I wasn't exactly CEO, nobody had titles. I had co-founders, but yeah, in the end, it's like, this is how I do things, you know, so. But I'm not going to say it didn't create friction. I mean, I don't know. What do you think, Hamel? Like, you work with me and you see how I jump onto totally different things when we're meant to be focused on something.
Um, I actually don't see you, I don't see you getting distracted that much, at least for me.
Like, we're talking about APL right now, when we're meant to actually be focused on releasing NB Dev and I'm meant to be doing the course, you know, it's like.
Okay, no, yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, like, um, in, in hindsight, it looks like it was all part of a, like, a genius plan.
Okay.
While you're doing it, it's like, why are we doing this? That's how I feel sometimes. But then, it's kind of like, uh, that thing we did with Rich. I don't know if you remember that.
With, uh, with, uh, GH top, with, uh, with, uh, your old CEO, we, we.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
His thing using Rich, yeah.
Like, we spent so much time doing that, and while, while we were doing it, I was like, why are we, you know, at some point, I was like, I don't know if this is worth it, or, you know, but then, uh, like, uh, you know, Will mentioned that he started his company based upon this, that project. And I thought, wow, that, that's a really big impact. Uh, and so like.
Texturize, yeah.
Yeah, so then I just kind of learned over time that it actually, you can pivot these things into something productive, usually.
Yeah, so this, this company, texturize.io, Will, who created it, said came out of Hamel and I refactoring. There we go. It's still the most recent one, so nobody's touched it since. This rather mega PR. Which, yeah, basically took Rich and made it do things that Will hadn't exactly expected it to do.
This is quite funny, because I think yesterday, or two days ago, I went to this website, texturize.io, and I was thinking, hmm, what does this do? Like, how are they planning on sending it? Or what's the plan? I mean, the, the website is beautifully designed. So I thought that there must be some business entity behind it. And I just thought, yeah.
That's. Yeah, so it's basically, you know, one guy, although I think he might have, he's got some funding, so I think he's hired somebody to help now, who loves building CLIs. And so what Hamel and I showed with our GH top thing was that actually you can, like, use another tool he's created called Rich to kind of get a long way towards building terminal user interfaces and. Um, yeah, this is something.
It's come full circle now, now that somebody's using Texturize to build a notebook in the terminal.
That's true, which is, which is great. All right. So, uh, since I'm on the Mac today, let me just check something. If I switch to a different virtual screen, you guys can now see my terminal. Is that correct? Okay, great. Um, yeah, so since I'm on the Mac, um, I just, um, downloaded that Jupiter kernel, and I unzipped it and ran install.sh, and, um, it looks like I now have a dialogue APL thing here. So one thing that's happened since yesterday is we now have a GitHub repo. Which? Let's have a look. APL study, there you go. So I don't have that over here, so let's grab it. So I'll go copy. Yeah, so we've got a fast AI slash APL dash study, and really all that's in it at the moment is my notebook. And so I should be able to now get clone that. There we go. And so I should now be able to open that. Good. And there he is, I should be able to run it. Hooray. Okay. Oh, and then the other thing we did was reinstall that toolbar widget thingy, oh, which I've actually already got here, so that's good. So I guess I have to go bookmarks. Shift Apple B, okay. APL. Great. So, uh, let's see if I can type. Backtick two, yep, it works. Okay. So I'm back up to where we were on the different computer. So let's do times and divide, shall we? And I guess I should also run dialogue. And we should also get up our help, which was called dialogue language elements. Cool. All right, that's two times. So at first, it feels a bit weird that, um, times and divide are actually on hyphen and equals. But then you realize that, like, plus, minus, times and divide are all kind of next to each other on the keyboard, so it's not quite that weird. Um, I seem to have got used to it pretty quickly. So we can do two times three. Um, so that makes sense.
How did you get the APL keyboard on top of Jupiter notebook?
It's, it's, if you go to the forum.
Oh, it's in the forums, okay.
Um, I think, did we discuss it yesterday? I don't quite remember. Maybe we didn't.
I, I saw. Thingy.
Yeah.
That loads, but I just didn't know where to take it from.
Yeah, okay, so specifically, the steps are. You. There we are. Here's the bookmarklet, so click here. And then you, as it says, you drag this to your bookmarks bar. This, this link. And then you go to the Jupiter webpage and you click that link in your bookmarks bar and it'll appear. Okay, and this thing is called, not surprisingly, time sign. And the two forms of it are okay, direction. And multiply, oh, it's actually called times, okay. Times. Okay, so. Um, obviously, we can multiply a scalar by a scalar, we can multiply a scalar by a list. And we can multiply a list by a list. And remember, just because there's no space here, doesn't mean this is one times two. This is this list times this list. So space binds more tightly. Does that make sense so far?
Yep.
Okay. Now, monadic times is taking us into complex world again, which is fun. Let's see what it says, direction. So again, we look over to the top right. Again, it says R is the result of doing times on Y. Y is any numeric array. Okay, when an element of Y is real, the corresponding element of the result is an integer whose value indicates whether the value is negative, zero, or positive. So this is what we'd normally call the sine function in most languages. Um, and often in math, it's called that as well. Um, and so just to check here, 3.1 is positive, so that returns 1. Negative 2 is negative, so that returns negative 1. And 0 is neither, so that returns 0. Okay, so those ones, okay? So this is showing us the sign, which they call direction. Complex numbers. The corresponding element is a number with the same phase, but with magnitude of 1. It's equivalent to this. So let's find out what this does.
I think that'll give you the absolute value.
Yeah, magnitude, they call it, the absolute value. So, direction is what does that mean for complex?
Is that gonna give either I or negative I?
I guess we should try it. Is that just a regular bar? See. It is. Okay, um. So it's actually something a bit more interesting.
I think this is gonna, yeah, I mean, if you visualize it as a vector, right, it's just gonna normalize the vector to magnitude 1.
Yes, um, that's gonna require some drawing, I think. I just want to get up the, uh, documentation to see how they describe it. Magnitude of a complex number. Okay, great. So we're gonna do some more complex number stuff, which is cool.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, so I think so far, the gloves for monadic and dyadic are the same for all the gloves that we've looked at, except for Nick and minus sign, which is a different one. Do you know why that is?
No, they're, they're always the same.
Always the same.
Yeah, I think what you might be getting confused about is the difference between, um, the thing that lets you specify a negative number, which is that versus the function which takes the negative of an array, which is that.
Oh, I see.
That's not a function. This binds more tightly than a function. This is actually, this is more like the dot here is not a function, right? It's part of the literal number 2.3.
Okay, is it the same as, as?
The negative's not part of, is not a function, it's part of the number negative 2.3.
Okay, thanks.
No worries. So I, if I do this, this is not saying apply the negative function to these four things. It's saying this is a list containing this negative number, and this, and this, and this positive number. So if I wanted to negate those four things, I would have to do this. Yeah, so hyphen is a function, and this, uh, upper bar thing is just part of a number. Not a function, just like dot is part of a number, just like J is part of a number.
Jeremy, so this JavaScript keyboard, it gives, uh, when you hover over a symbol, it gives these key bindings that work with a regular keyboard, not APL keyboard.
Uh huh.
But it would be preferred to use the APL keyboard, right, than to?
No, not at all. Um, they're the same. The, the difference is an APL keyboard has pictures of those letters on them. But they produce the same things. You still have to have the same software, whatever. So the only reason to have an APL physical keyboard is so that you can look at the keyboard and see the.
I know, I, I got it. I was thinking about the APL keyboard in Windows.
Oh, in Windows? Okay.
Because these, these things, the JavaScript applet thing here, it gives you other key bindings that work with the regular keyboard, like, uh, you know, like XX tab is for multiplication.
Yeah. Oh, okay, so don't, I suggest not using those. Instead, use, at the very bottom, it says backtick dash, use that one, because those are identical to the Windows keyboard. So you just use backtick followed by the same letter you would use in the Windows keyboard. And so here, this one is backtick equals. Yeah, I would ignore those tab ones.
Okay, but, uh, this also works with just a regular Windows keyboard. Should I be using the APL keyboard, like?
Yeah, you can use the Windows APL keyboard if you want. Um, I, so I'm not using that right now, because A, I'm not on Windows. But B, even on Windows, I actually prefer not to use it because it takes away my control key, and I like my control key.
Yes. So, so the backtick notation, the one on the, on the bottom here, will be the, the preferred one.
It's, it's what I'm liking so far, but obviously I'm very new to this, so I don't take my word for it, but yeah, I, I like the backtick approach, because it.
I tend to use that as well.
Let's begin with copy and paste and everything in the usual way. Yeah. Okay, let's talk about complex numbers some more, shall we? So, um, yeah, I, this is one of those things I didn't really get into much at university. I mean, I wish somebody told me how cool they are. Okay, so the thing, I guess we talked about yesterday, is how we can create this, like, uh, complex number plane, right? And so along this axis, you've got the real number line. And then along this axis, you've got the imaginary number line. Okay. So you can put numbers there. For example, here's the number 2. And here's the number minus 3i. But you could also create the number here. 2 plus 2i. Okay, so that's the complex number 2 plus 2i would go there. And you can think of that as a vector, right? It goes from the origin and it goes up to there. There's another way of thinking of 2 plus 2i. And that vector has a length. And we can calculate its length because it is, we have here a right angled triangle. So we have a right angle triangle. And its height is 2. And its base is 2. So its length, yeah, we can get from the Pythagorean theorem. Does that make sense so far? So, um, that is the magnitude of this complex number. So the magnitude of real numbers is easy, right? Because like, what's the magnitude of this number here? Well, it's how far away is it from the origin? And the answer is 3. You know, what's the magnitude of this number here? Well, that's easy. It's 1, right? This one's also easy, 3i, what's its magnitude? What's distance from the origin is also 3, right? Um, but yeah, the ones where you've got a mixture of imaginary and real, you have to use the Pythagorean theorem to find out their magnitude, a single number, which is like, how big is it? And, um, if we take a number, so this number, the number we're here, we were dealing with here was 2 plus 2i. Which, um, APL writes like this. It's the same thing. And, um, um, they have this thing called direction which is basically saying take a number, for example, like uh, 3. And 3, the direction of 3 is plus 1, and the direction of negative 3 is negative 1. And basically, what we're doing is we're taking the number 3 and dividing it by its magnitude. And that's another way of thinking about this sine function, okay? So like, what, what do you do in, for a complex number? Well, you take the number and divide it by its magnitude to do the same thing. And so that's gonna give you something that is gonna be, you know, around about here. So it's gonna be pointing. It's gonna be pointing in the same direction. No, excuse me. It's gonna be pointing in the same direction. But it's gonna be shorter. And specifically, we can draw this really important thing which is called the unit circle. And the unit circle is something that has a radius of 1. Right? And it's centered on the origin. And so the, um, direction, anytime we get the direction of a reel, we're gonna get something that points in the same direction as the original number, but is actually, sits on the unit circle. Its length will be 1. Does that make sense? So we could try it, right? So, um, so what's the square root of 8? So we could do 8 to the power of negative 2. Um. That's not right. Uh, sorry, to the power of half, rather. God, that was embarrassing.
Two or half, yeah.
Okay, uh, and so we thought if we took 2J2 and divide that by 8 the power of half. We get that. And if we get the direction, times of 2J2. Hooray! It's the same. So, um, and rather than writing 8 times 5, what I could have written here is magnitude of 2J2. Because that's what magnitude means. Okay, so uh, does that make sense, what it's doing? You'll notice that, like, although complex numbers are about this, i, the square root of minus 1, we don't think about that at all, right? When we're doing this complex number stuff, we, um, we just treat it as a, a pair of numbers, which therefore can represent a point in Cartesian space, and therefore that can represent a vector. And.
Um, is that 0.7 radians? Like, what is that value?
No, this is a, um, this is a complex number. It's 0.7J0.7, so it's 0.7 plus 0.7i. Because remember, 2 plus 2i is written as 2J2 in, um, in APL. So this is 0.7 plus 0.7i, so it's a complex number. And so it's this, it's this point here. It's the complex number that has the same direction as 2J2, but has a magnitude of 1. And therefore it sits on the unit circle. And like, we really like to do things on the unit circle, because on the unit circle, um, if we kind of draw that out a little bit more. If we stick to things that are on the unit circle, so here's 1. 1, 1. 1 minus 1. Minus 1. So these points are nice because you can pick any one of those points, like here. Right? And if you create that triangle, then this hypotenuse here, the length of it is 1. Which is really convenient, right? Because if you're doing like trigonometry or something, right, you've got like sine theta circatawa equals opposite over hypotenuse. Well, that's always 1 on the unit circle. So we can, um, we can delete that part entirely. Instead, we get sine theta equals opposite. You know, so it's, it's, it's nice to deal with stuff that's on the unit circle. Things become more convenient. We can ignore the whole magnitude slash hypotenuse piece entirely. Trigonometry coming back, huh? Probably a lot of us haven't seen it since high school. All right, so what do we say about monadic times? Um, we haven't introduced magnitudes yet, so let's put that away down here for later. And for now, I guess we'll just say. That. The magnitude. Of three J four. Is. Equal to. Guess we don't have a way of even doing a square root. So we'll just have to kind of do it with prose. So the magnitude of three J four is equal to the square root of three squared plus four squared. So that's nine. Plus sixteen. Oh, yeah, of course, three, four, five is a Pythagorean triple, so. It's basically going to be. We're going to be dividing by. Five. Yeah, so, so basically. Three. Three J four. Means. Three plus. Four i. Which has a magnitude of. Twenty-five. Because. Does a magnitude of five. Because three times, I guess we should use this, three times three. Plus. Four times four. Equals. Five times five. So oh point six J oh point eight. Represents. A vector in the same direction. As. As three J four. Three J four. But. Is a magnitude of five. Since it's. Three J four. Divided by. Five. Okay, how's that? So that's diatic times. Now that does mean that we just use divide, and I don't want to use anything until we've introduced it. So. We should probably do divide first, and divide, I think, is actually a bit of an easier one. Okay, so divide. Which is on the equals sign on the APL keyboard. Died, here we are. Okay, so that's called divide sign. Divide sign. The monadic version. Called reciprocal. Recip. Reciprocal, reciprocal, did I spell that right? No, reciprocal. And the diatic version is called divided by. Or divided by. Okay, and I guess what we could do is grab all of those. And paste them in here. And I wonder if this works, can we go find times and replace with divide? Oh, lovely. There we go. Okay, so divided by is easy. Does anybody here not know what reciprocal does? Maybe we don't, oh, we can't do zero. Okay. Let's change this to three.
As a side note, I found the reciprocal to be kind of handy when I'm doing. In square roots or cube roots or anything like that, because then you can do, rather than doing the. Zero point five power, you can do.
Sixteen.
To the reciprocal.
To the power of. Reciprocal. Each, for example, yeah, so a cube root, you could do the cube root of eight, like so. And I guess.
Think you need those parentheses.
Yeah, exactly, I don't think we need the parentheses. Because first it does it one at a time, right? So it's going to do divide. So this is going to be the first thing it does is divide three, it's this reciprocal of three. And then it's going to be tie, power of, on the left will be eight, and on the right will be reciprocal three. Which is cool.
So it's like function composition?
Yes, it, it is, which is actually a great time to talk about. That. Because. We've now got. Our four basic operators from math. And so we should now talk about precedence. And I think I want to change my headings a little bit. Got to create a section called. Basic math. Operators. Wait, what have I got here? I've got plus sign twice, did I do something weird? Diatic minus, monadic minus. Plus sign, monadic plus. Okay, this. Diatic plus. Bide. Monadic, diatic. Times monadic, diatic. Okay, precedence. So. Here is. A formula. Three. Times. Two plus one. Okay, so in regular math. We would go three times two first, get six, and then we'd add one and get seven. And there's a couple of reasons we do that. The first is that times is a higher precedence than plus. And even if it wasn't, we go left to right. So is this seven? No, it's not. And that's because. APL makes things much simpler for us by having no concept of. Precedence of different functions. They all have the same precedence. And the rule is we always go right to left, not left to right. So this is the same as this. And that's good, because you wouldn't want to remember precedence rules for all, what are these? Like fifty or sixty or whatever glyphs, right? So they all have the same precedence. That doesn't mean all symbols have the same precedence. We've learned of a few symbols that have different precedence. So for example, space, right? Three plus. Four, space two. Space between numbers binds more tightly. Because this would be better to explain like this. This binds more tightly, so this is the list three, five added to four. Or the array three, five added to four. Which is the same as. That. So when I say we're doing things right to left, I'm only talking about functions, right? And remember. That upper bar thing is not a function. Right, that's part of the number. And this space here is not a function, that's part of this array. So functions specifically, you can tell something's a function because you look it up. In the help. And, oh, it's going to tell you it's a function. Ah, okay, we can see here, it's listed under the section called primitive functions. Okay, so we can tell that this is a function, because it's in the functions part of the help. Most of the things up here are going to be functions. As we'll learn shortly, some of them are operators, and. The rules are different for operators, but most of these, everything we've seen so far, in terms of times. Divide, plus and minus are all functions. So that's the rule, we go right to left. So. In this version here, right? We go right to left, so okay, we've got the number three. Now we've got three. Divide. Okay, well, that means the reciprocal of three. And then we keep going left, we come across this. Time, this power of, and it has a right hand side. And it has a left hand side. And that's why this is eight to the power of a third. Does that make sense? So we could do that with. A list. And so remember, the symbol space binds the most tightly, so this is the. List one, two, three, multiplied by two plus one, because we go right to left. So we go one plus two. Times this list, so that'll be three times that list. And we could also do this. So this will be this list to this array, two, four, six, plus two. Though all that in brackets, and then multiplied by the array one, two, three. So two plus two is four, two plus four is six, two plus six is eight. Eight times three is twenty-four. Six times two is twelve. Four times one is four. That make sense?
Yes, so I'm not sure if that's related, but that. A function for giving us the magnitude direction it was, I think. That would, for an array, it still works on each component. It, it, it doesn't normalize the whole array.
Right, right, basically. Pretty much all the functions in their normal forms work element wise, like NumPy does. Including power and reciprocal and magnitude and so forth. That's a good point.
Did you go over the power of symbol? I don't know if.
Not yet, no.
Okay.
I thought we might do that now. I think that kind of counts as a. Basic math operator, kind of. So. Yeah, so let's do, okay, so this is. Confusing, this is shift eight, the normal multiply sign from Python. Doesn't mean multiply. It means exponential or power. So, and it's called star. Okay, and diatic. Power? So exponential means e to the power of. So this is. E to the power of zero is one. E to the power of one is two point seven one eight. And e to the power of two apparently is. Seven point three eight nine. Does anybody not know what e is, or want to refresh her of what e is?
Yeah, refresher would be great.
Sure.
Refusers are always great.
Sure. The only reason I can do all these refreshes off the top of my head is because I've done all this stuff with my, you know, my daughter and her friend recently, so I can. I can do math refreshes like this, I've, I'm ready. About a month ago, I couldn't, because I'd forgotten everything. So e. The basic idea is like, if you put a hundred dollars in the bank. Right? At a hundred percent interest. Then after one year. You'll get two hundred dollars. And specifically, that's your original hundred. Plus. Sorry, I should say. Times. One plus the interest, and a hundred, a hundred percent is a hundred over a hundred, so it's one. But. The bank might not. Give you the whole, you know, might not calculate the whole thing at the end of the year. If they want to be a bit more generous, they could calculate it twice, they could calculate it once at six months, and, and again, after another six months. So you take your hundred dollars. And after six months. They would give you half of your interest, so that's fifty percent. So after six months, you would have a hundred and fifty. And then, and another six months, they'll give you the other fifty percent. But the other fifty percent is now going to be calculated on this, right? So this is times one point five, and then again, times one point five. Two twenty-five. Which is. One hundred times. One plus point five. Squared. If they're really generous, they could pay it quarterly. And if they paid it quarterly, then the amount of money you're going to make is a hundred times one plus, actually, let's do this as a fraction rather than as a decimal, a quarter. Therefore. Or they could pay it. Daily. One hundred times one plus one over three six five. To the three six five. Okay, so we should be able to. Calculate these things in APL, right? No promises, we could give it a go. So let's do this one. So let's do this one, a hundred plus, a hundred times one plus a quarter to the four. One hundred. Times. One plus a quarter. Now, a quarter is. That, it's a reciprocal of four, one plus a quarter. Okay, to the power of is this. And so this is going to happen first because we go right to left. Um. Actually, I say you don't have a hundred dollars in the bank, let's say you've got one dollar in the bank. Okay, so in that case, your one dollar would become two dollars if it was paid just at the end of the year. Or it'd become two dollars and twenty five cents if it was paid every six months. Or it'd become two dollars and forty four cents if it was paid every quarter. Or we could do. Three six five. Five. If it's paid every day. It would be this number. And you can see, the more often it's paid. The more money you're going to get. Right? But like, addition, you know, initially. This went up pretty quickly, but now it's going up pretty slowly. So let's say it was paid hourly. Uh, let's say it's paid a hundred times per day. And it's not really making much difference at this point. Um, E. Is the limit of this as this number gets really, really, really high. So we could write that. In math. And we can say E. Is the limit. As. Um. Whatever, X goes to infinity, so as X gets really big, that never hits infinity of. Okay, and the one times we can just ignore. Right? So it's the limit of one plus. One divided by X. Rrr. Rrr, to the power of X. That makes sense? That's E. How's that, Reddick?
I just remembered the definition of limit. Wow, that's something I have not seen in ages.
Yeah, I gotta say, um, the kids loved seeing limit, you know? And of course, they're immediately like, well, just get rid of it and put infinity there. Right, okay, let's put infinity there, one plus one divided by infinity. Okay, kids, what's one divided by infinity? Zero. Okay, what's one plus zero? One. What's one to the power of infinity? One. Okay, so does E equal one? No. So, okay, well, what do we do? They're like, well, what about infinity minus one? Oh, that's till infinity. Um. So this was our first introduction to limits and they, they were just like, they were partly like, wow, that's so cool, and they were partly like. Never show me anything like this again. This is wrong. It shouldn't happen. Get it out of my life.
No, but 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 this is beautiful because like they're trying to make it concrete and somehow relates to to these ideas, that's amazing and. They will understand it at a much deeper level than people, you know, just. You know, going through this, reading theorems in in a classroom and uh, yeah, that there's something deeply disturbing about limit. And I guess like, like the takeaway is that this is just something that people agree to, right? This is.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's, I think it's more than just something people agree to, like it's, it's, it's some kind of reality. You know, like it's, it's a true, it's a true thing that exists independently of our discovery of it.
Right, but how do you make the jump from something getting closer to something? Being that value that it gets closer to? Th- th- this is a definition, this is like a.
Yeah, I don't know. Anyway, I mean, I think it's really cool, yeah.
It is cool.
All right, so that is, um. That is monatic, uh. Monatic star and E. Is named after Euler. I think Euler, as more specifically Euler named it after himself. Uh, famous uh blind Swiss mathematician, but uh Euler did not discover E. Um, I I don't know who did, but it wa- it wasn't him, even though he got to name it somehow. Um. Um. For those of you that remember calculus, you know, you can take the derivative of various functions, for example, we saw in um the fast AI class that the derivative of X squared is two X. Um, one of the things that's interesting about E is that the derivative of E to the X is E to the X. Um, it 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 has a lot of crazy things going on with E and comes up. A lot. Um. The maybe the most cool, beautiful. Formula in the world is Euler's identity. Which brings together. A lot of the things we've seen so far. And it's E to the i pi plus one equals zero, or to put it another way, E to the i pi equals negative one. Which is like. Total madness that. This thing, which is about circles and this thing, which is about imaginary numbers and this thing, which is about compound interest, somehow combined to create negative one. So that's mind blowing. And so that's what, that's why monatic star is E to the power of, E to the power of is a pretty important. Thing. And so we don't need a special symbol for E, right? Because anytime you want E, you just write this. All right. And then, okay, dyadic star is power of, so forty nine to the power of a half is square root of forty nine. Five to the power of two is five squared. Uh, minus four, square root is two I. Because it's equal to, um. Minus one times four. So you get the square root of minus one, which is I times the square root of four, which is two, two I. All right, is that supposed to stop, I guess? Yeah. Go.
I think this is the first time E to the i pi has actually made sense to me, because I did make the connection that. Uh, pi is essentially like, I think, like a half, like a half circle in radians or something. And so I is just that other, uh, you know, I guess like the Y on the plane. So all you're doing is you're just curving that around to the other side to turn it into a negative one, add one on to that and now you've got zero.
Um, yes, exactly. And maybe Wayne, you can try to find like. A really good video or something that explains that for people that have never seen that before, because I think that'd be a great thing to put in the.
Oh, yeah, uh, I think this is a channel, three blue, one brown may have some stuff. If I see anything, I'll uh put it up.
Yeah, ideally something that doesn't use any concepts that we haven't. Come across yet, you know?
Mm hmm. I keep my eye open for that.
Yeah, I mean, the key thing around complex numbers to me, I think, is this idea that, um. If you multiply by negative one, you flip something from one side of the, um. You flip something from one side of the number line to the other on the real plane. Um, ditto, if you multiply by, um. Negative one for a complex, for an imaginary number, it flips it to the other side of the number line. Um. Um, but if you multiply something by I, it rotates it by ninety degrees, you go from two to two I to negative two. To negative two I back to two. And so, yeah, um. And I think a lot of these ideas end up basically being these kind of rotations. Around this number plane.
Yeah, you see stuff like that all over in engineering. I think for me, when I made the connection that, um, if you look at the I as kind of a shorthand. Uh, for having an array of two numbers, like basically just coordinates on a plane. Um, and that's just a way to to kind of have that mapping to your number line. All of a sudden, everything else starts to fall into place. And then when you're talking about magnitudes and stuff, I'm like, oh. Wait, I've seen this before as like, uh, you know, magnitudes in. I mean, when you're, is it like the L two norm or something like that? It's like, even if we're just having like the magnitude of like.
Absolutely.
In fact, it's the exact same thing.
It's slightly, it is. Wassim put this in the chat. What's this about, Wassim? Can you tell us?
Oh, so it looks like the Jupiter kernel has a way of ending, I don't know what to call it, like function composition.
So if I type this into Jupiter.
Yeah.
Like that.
Mm hmm.
What am I referencing?
Around the cell.
Do you mean the the parenthesis?
Execute just that.
Oh, okay, it gives us the expression tree, that's beautiful. Okay. We will uh come back to learning about that. Um. About that later, but yeah, you can basically put a bunch of functions in a row and it does interesting things, uh, if you get rid of the parentheses. Hey, favor, couldn't it be? All right, thanks, gang. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Yeah, have a good one.
Yeah.